I'd like to call to order the Township North Huntington Board of Commissioners, Special Meeting for Thursday, April 11, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Manager Silka.
Commissioner Harold, Commissioner Britanni.
Here.
Commissioner Blasko.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Casera.
Here.
Commissioner Higas.
Here.
Could everyone please stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
If any residents would like to speak tonight, they can sign the book at the podium. If you want, sir, you could just stay up there. If you just want to state your name and address for the record, you can speak.
My name's Brian Apelko. This is Kerry Zabinski. We're at 1431 Peachtree Lane. Okay, the issue we're having is the hillside behind our property is sliding. And it has slid down and has broken the main sewer line that is at the bottom of the hill. I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not. But the Sewer Authority then said that they were going to fix the hillside because it's slid down and broke their main line. Well, I went to a meeting last night, and their proposal was to move the main line into the front of the house rather than behind the house, put grinder pumps in every house all the way up the street where that line goes down, and require the homeowners to sign agreements that, you know, they would not flush certain things down the toilet. And then, they were not going to do anything with the hillside. And I spoke with Dave Harold today about it, and I told him I was coming out. He said he wouldn't be here. But the question we're asking then is, well, then who's going to fix this hillside if the Storm Authority's not, or the Sewer Authority's not? Because, I mean, I don't know if you have questions, because the report from the Sewer Authority that they got said that the fill in there was very loose, it wasn't compacted right, and that was one of the causations, obviously, with the rain on the hillside.
The retention.
And there were two detention ponds on our lot and the lot next door. And I do not believe the Township adequately took care of that, to have the fill, the correct fill and the correct compactness and everything of the property. So our question is, and now it's impacting, you know, everybody upstream from us, I mean, can the Sewer Authority unilaterally do that? Force us to put these grinder pumps in? Because my understanding is that, I mean, they're from $1,500 to $30,000. And doesn't the Township actually have a say in that?
All right. The way citizens' input works, you can, you know, state your comment, and then we'll respond to your comment. It's not a give and take.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, when you say you'll respond.
Yeah, we'll respond once you're done with your comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else to add?
No. I mean, I don't know if anyone's aware, but this has just been, you know, been lied to. We had a problem, just to quickly recap, had a problem, the sewer was not working. Called the authority, they came out and tested it. It was my problem to fix. Their main was fine. So we spent a lot of money, used a reputable contractor that they recommend on their list, and did everything like we're supposed to. And then, two days later, I come home from work, and the Sewer Authority is outside replacing the main line. And there it is, I have pictures of the broken main. So lied to us, you know, said that it was our responsibility, there was no problem with their main, and then they said, oh, we were wrong, ours is broken. So they replaced it, and they've been out, and they've had people out, I don't know if the Township had people out, there was people with boring equipment testing to see if it was mine subsidence. We hired an engineer, they sent engineers out. It's been a three-ring circus back there. All of the equipment back and forth from the Sewer Authority made the situation worse. I have pictures from beginning to end showing what it looks like now, and it really looks like an asteroid hit. There's an empty property next to us, and it's on that property as well. So this issue concerns two properties. So, you know, we didn't do anything wrong here. It seems like everyone's passing the buck, and we just need to get to the bottom of it and need to do something, you know, with this property. We don't want it left like this. I don't think our neighbors want it left like this. Everybody wants answers of what's going on.
Yeah, and the fix that the Sewer Authority proposed actually identifies three properties, 1411, 1421, 1431, Peachtree Lane. And the Sewer Authority asked for a stormwater management plan for this. This is Oakton Manor Phase Two. And when I was there yesterday, they informed me, they were told there is no plan, which I find hard to believe. I've contacted the Westmoreland Conservation District, you know, they're going to look into it. But, I mean, I mean, something needs done. This was not developed correctly. And it was not, I mean, if it was approved by the Township, then nobody did their due diligence to make sure these guys were going out and adequately filling this, especially since there was a detention pond on both these properties.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Silka, I think you might be, have a little bit more information on this if, from the email earlier today, I believe.
Sure. I mean, yeah, this was brought to the Planning and Zoning Department. This is, the slide is strictly on private property. There's no municipal easement, there's no municipal infrastructure. This is simply land between two properties. As we've had, unfortunately, a couple other slides in the Township within, you know, the bounds of private property, which isn't our, it's not in our jurisdiction to mitigate or remediate. I think as far as this, with the NHTMA, they're an independent authority. What I would do is challenge them, you know, you know, they make the decisions of where and how sewer lines and how sewers collected. This board does not direct them in how to work or what to do. Their authority is appointing authority to the board. And that, you know, you did submit a write-to-no request today, you know, we denied it based on the fact that there was no, we have no reports or field studies done because it's on private property. So, you know, we have not studied that area. I think that kind of brings us to where we are today.
Any further board comments? Brian, I looked at a photo there. Is that a photo you want to share with the board or pass around, we can take a look at?
You said you denied the request?
I mean, excuse me, sir, the way citizens' input works, I mean, you spoke, it's really not a give and take back, like I said. So, I mean, you can follow up with Manager Silka after the meeting if you have any further questions for him.
Okay, because I didn't know it was denied. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Any other further board comments or discussion? All right. Moving on, work session discussion topics.
Okay. Couple meetings ago, we were discussing some Township vacant properties and vacant lands, and, you know, is there any appetite or market to, you know, maybe put some up for sale? So what I kind of want to bring the board up to is where we are with this process. And this process started very ambitiously, where we identified 21 parcels throughout the Township that are vacant parcels, remnants, that we, some are little parklets, some are simply residuals in different plans. Then we did, the next step was a preliminary deed research. And what that did is that knocked off every park parcel. As park parcels were procured under Act 70, which is a parkland, open land program with the state, in order to change the use of that property, it takes an act of legislature. So we, what we did then is took a look at the properties that are available. Okay, get that down for you, General. And that came down to nine. Nine properties, basically, that we have State Route 993, Funnits Town Road, Sherick Drive, Astro Drive, Public Works Drive, which is a 20-acre lot, we will discuss a little bit later, Easy Street, Micah Drive, Guffy Road Pine Wood, Guffy Road Pine Wood. And just to kind of go through, this is the, you know, this is residual, it's like .19 acres on State Route 993. So it's a small sliver. On Funnits Town Road, there's this sliver right here, which is .11 acres. However, that was dedicated for use for turnaround purposes only. So there may be a little bit of a problem with that, even though there's really no practical use for that. On Sherick Drive, there was, you know, there's a former pumping station from NHTMA that we received that property. That's .31 acres. In Astro Drive, there's, you know, .01 acres dedicated for a hammerhead turnaround that's out there. This is the lot that was procured by the Township for development purposes in front of the Public Works Lot. That definitely, we're not going to be probably interested in selling unless there's a development that can generate revenue and probably employment. And then the other largest one is on High Ridge Drive and Easy Street, it's four acres, that's residual, that we find no deed restrictions on. And then, you know, a small sliver here, you know, at Main Street and Commerce Loop, this is residual within the business park. And these are too small on Guffy Road. So probably to answer your question, we really don't have any property that's of value, we probably, we probably wouldn't be worth the price of an appraisal to put these residual parcels out to bid for us. So I just wanted to kind of update the board and just say, you know, we took a swing at it, you know, we looked at park maintenance, you know, I will, you know, compliment Dan Miller, Parks Director, and also Ryan Fonzie, our Assistant Planning Director, they put a lot of legwork in. Ryan did a lot of the deed research that came back and broke all of our hearts when we had a really good presentation ready to go. So I just want to bring that board, and we can kind of bring this to closure, that we don't have surplus properties that are worth marketing or even taking the first step of an appraisal.
Do you think it would be worth it to put it on your website? Just because people visit it, and maybe they, it just might attract somebody's attention. I agree with you, it would be crazy to do appraisals for those small pieces of property. I mean, that just isn't going to work. Somebody might be interested in one of those little pieces, I don't know. I'm just suggesting to put it on your website in some fashion, I don't know.
See, I thought property that was on Easy Street, what was the acreage on that?
Let me get it back up, I closed it out.
Is it the largest one beside?
Yeah, it's four point something. It's about four acres.
Okay.
Any other board discussion? Thanks.
Okay. The next issue is the year-end financial review. This is a brief annotated view. I'm going to deliver a little bit more comprehensive, robust review with some trend, a little bit of trend analysis at the next meeting, but I didn't, unfortunately, I didn't have time to complete it to where I was happy with. This is the fourth installment of my quarterly reviews. This is the year, the end of the year to date for this year. As you see, our budget for 2018 was $14,097,944. And through, and through the year, we collected approximately 90% of our anticipated revenue and outlaid approximately 95% of our anticipated expenditures. So we were within our, we didn't exceed our budgeted numbers. But as you can see from the graphs, there's a trend, you know, from '15 on, that it is deficit spending, and in the report that I gave, the brief report, I did put deficit spending in quotation marks because it's authorized deficit spending, it's spending down the fund balance. And, you know, and unfortunately, we're coming to the end where spending down the fund balance and funding a deficit budget for a certain service level is going to hit the fund balance policy and, you know, basically make some hard decisions to come up. So I just want to kind of, you know, everybody was well within their budgeted line items, 92% for general administration, expenditures were at 90% for public safety, the police, fire departments, emergency management, and Public Works was at 97% of their budgeted amounts, Parks were at 90%. You know, a couple of things driving why, you know, we keep spending more and more is, one is, you know, the last two years, we've had landslide repairs, we've had stormwater issues, that we've, projects were taken. The dedication to the roadway paving and servicing program, which, you know, more money was dedicated to that. You know, we had police department costs, we, you know, the arbitration, you know, back pay issue that wasn't budgeted for this year. We had, you know, the cost of the arbitration, we, retirements that had cash outs, and kind of shifting from benefits from, whenever you shift a person from active, you know, benefits to retiree, basically the health costs double with our current provider. And then, you know, there's, you know, throughout the year, there's programs that, hey, you know, can we get this done? Or, you know, all of a sudden, this, you know, this storm inlet, you know, derides. So we're spending outside of our, you know, adding projects after the budget has been put on. Overall, you know, we're doing well, but, you know, I think you're going to see, as we've started from a staff perspective, is we started the budget process for 2020. Because, you know, a community like North Huntington, I like to call it, it's a complacent budget process because money's not an issue. You're not chasing that last payroll in December here. You know, we have money, we have programs, we have service expectations. So what we're doing from the staff is we're starting to pare away of, how can we maintain and grow, but at the same time not increase our funding needs? And, you know, a couple of things we're looking at real quickly is, we took a look at our service contracts. I think service contracts are probably a big eat, or you don't realize. You sign a service contract, I know, you know, the chief found one that they're paying a couple thousand dollars a year for a $500 replacement cost item to maintain it. So we went down. We're pairing down our computer services contract of, you know, what are we paying for, why are we paying for it? But there's other, there's other issues that we're going to focus on through the next couple of months, you know, I'm going to, we're going to do many workshops with the board to see, to see, you know, where your comfort levels are, where do you want to go with, you know, the core services, or, and then, you know, as we go with the extra services we provide. So I wanted to provide this to you to show us, you know, our spending's in line with our budget, but we are spending down our fund balance. And the next item that I can just, you know, kind of dovetail into this, is our fund balance calculation for 2019, is our budget this year was $14,920. Our, the fund balance policy requires 25% of the budget to be reserved in a fund balance. And that amount is $3,730, basically $3,730. Our unauthorized fund balance at the end of December, I'm sorry, there's a typo there, of 2018, was $4,238,844. So by reserving the $3,730, our unreserved fund balance for 2019 is $508,000. So, you know, that's down roughly $600,000 from last year. So for all intent purposes, we're at that hilt right now that we don't have the extra funds available through the fund balance. So that's why, you know, we'll take a look at our spending, our revenue collections, because the revenues are tracking pretty much on. You know, the main reason we got a 90% collection last year was our foreign fire fees, you know, came in about 30% under budget. So that knocked us down a little bit, percentage-wise. And that's something we have absolutely no control over. There's a secret formula, and there's a formula that's done, and we get a check at the end of the, you know, at the end of that formula. So, but our, you know, revenues are like 95% in tax, 97% in tax returns. So we're tracking where we need to track, it's just our expenditures are growing as our services grow and as our fixed costs grow, just like any other business. So I just want to let you guys know, this is where it is. As I say, I'll have a little bit more robust year-end analysis and some trends from the past year, and tracking to kind of set the table for the summer as we work on the budget. Because I don't want to wait till October to start this. I want this to be a process that, come October, we should be able to just to line up the line items. Okay. The next is, I have on for consideration authorizing a service agreement with the International City Managers Association Retirement Corporation for a 557B plan. We currently have, you know, our 457B, excuse me, we currently have Metropolitan Life as our 457. And this is strictly employee contributions. The Township does not fund any of these accounts. Metropolitan is getting out of the business. So we were, as a legacy, we're kind of being shuffled around. We lost our direct contact, and as some of our gentlemen and ladies have retired, they're having trouble getting their money out of them because there's no rep, you know, we kind of bounce around. And also, whoever set the account up in the eighties gave an address that we don't know. We know it's not in Pennsylvania, we think it's in Minnesota, so we can't get access to change our contact information because I can't pass the security clearance. And I thought I did it, and they said, oh, no, that only lasted for like 48 hours, you had, because we were just trying to get an ex, a past officer to get his money out. So what I want to do is go with ICMA Retirement Corporation. With ICMA is kind of the benchmark for municipal investments. It's a 457, you know, even though we don't put any money in it, we have to approve it because the Township is a fiduciary on 457 plan. We hold the, you know, the strings to it, even though we don't put any money into it. But this one has been around forever. It's nationwide, and it's made for public sector. They only do public sector, municipal managers and county managers and staff. And what we do here, we do it as a voluntary, there's people who want to switch, they'd switch the balances, and then probably, you know, the ghost of Christmas is future is going to be, we'd probably make this our mandatory one and phase out of Metropolitan.
Any discussion?
Okay. I have one additional item. In talking with Commissioner Blasko, he had asked, you know, the possibility of seeing a distracted driving policy. And our solicitor, a couple months ago, has kind of, you know, disseminated some information in a draft policy for an authority they were working with. So what I've kind of did was cut and pasted a distracted driving policy for North Huntington Township, which basically bans the use of handheld or hands-free cell phones while operating a car, you know, operating a Township vehicle, driving on Township property, using any cellphone provided by the Township, or using a personal phone on Township business. If anybody has driven anywhere lately, you'll see that people on cell phones is a major accident waiting to happen, literally. And I think this one is pretty basic. It gives us, you know, if you're driving a Township vehicle or a piece of equipment, you can't be on the phone. You don't, you don't need to be on the phone. But one thing I did do is put that the Chief of Police can make such modifications for public, approved by the manager, for public safety issues. You know, if they're, you're talking on the phone to avoid radio, something like that, I think he can come up with a policy to allow that, and, you know, taking personal calls out of that area, but allowing for emergency-related calls.
Yeah, Jeff, thanks for putting this together. I wanted to do something, since the state of Pennsylvania seems to be dragging its feet on a distracted driving policy, and many other states are. I think we should be the model for the residents and demonstrate safe driving practices. So thanks for putting that together.
You're welcome.
So this will be an action item?
Yes, it'll be an action item, be adopted and put in the policy manual.
Any questions on the policy?
I have some questions about it. Because there probably are times when these people might have to be on the phone as an emergency.
Well, the police can make that. I mean, there's really no reason that we would talk on the phone from the municipal perspective, driving, there would be nothing we'd have to do.
How about the road crew? I mean, what if they need to talk to somebody because there's an impediment where they're supposed to be, or?
Well, they wouldn't be operating, if they're, if they're driving the vehicle, they shouldn't be on the phone. If it's that bad, if they can be in the vehicle, they just can't be operating the vehicle, driving the vehicle. I wouldn't want to see a pod driver talking on the cellphone, driving down, you know, in the middle of a snowstorm.
You want them to pull over.
Yes, I mean, if they pull over, if they stop, then they can use it, but you can't use it while you're driving. And that's, that's the gist of this.
So just one other thing, what if, and this just recently happened to a friend of mine, he's a commercial driver. He was using his cellphone for the GPS function, and using the Google Maps, whatever it was, and he got written up for it because being a commercial driver, you can't use any type of, but he ended up beating it because he was using it for a cellphone, or a GPS. So, I mean, is that, is that going to be, not to say that anybody in the Township is going to need a GPS to get anywhere in the Township, but.
You never know.
You never know. Yeah, you're right. So.
Yeah. I would say because you're not actively involved with the GPS. The GPS is basically telling you through audible where to go.
Okay. So just because, he, so what happened to him, just to elaborate, he was sitting at a stoplight stopped, he picked it up to check to make sure that he was on the right track and whatnot, and putting cops on, pick it up, and he pulled him over for using a cellphone while driving a commercial vehicle, even though he was stopped aderent. We ended up beating it, but it's just, just, you know, throwing it out there.
Okay, I get it. And, I mean, I see it all the time with people, you know, holding it up, texting, talking. The hands-free thing, I'm a little iffy on that. Reason being is I have it in my vehicle, I talk while I'm driving down the road. I'd rather be talking like that than talking like this, driving the road and looking over and say, well, honey, the hands-free, you're still paying attention to what's on the road if a vehicle's equipped with it.
Exactly, that's where I was going to go, Duane. The vehicle's equipped with the hands-free Bluetooth device, because my vehicle is too.
Yeah, because I can push a button, I can dial, I can say, call, call honey.
Yeah, right.
Well, with a hands-free, it's just like talking to another passenger in your car.
Right. And you're not, but you're not turning and looking at that passenger.
Right.
You know, you're still, and I understand the studies, but.
Do we have these accessories in Township vehicles, is the question I have?
Well, that's the question. So it depends on the vehicle, I mean, I would think, I wouldn't think any of the road department vehicles.
No, and we're looking to, again, model safe operation. And when you're in the vehicle, you should be functioning on your Township business. So as laid out in the policy, if you have to make a phone call, you do it while parked stationary. So it's not that people can't use the phone, you pull over, put your car in park, and make your phone call there. I think it's a pretty clear-cut, no-brainer on this one. It's my personal opinion on that.
Any other discussion?
I agree with you. I think if you're physically interacting with the device, that is obviously an issue. But if you, like, I believe mine in my back pocket in my truck, and I'm making phone calls, they call, call Joe Blow and whatever.
Yeah, and I understand.
And you can put your.
A lot of Township vehicles probably don't have the hand-free, but. Chief, first of all, does any of the police vehicles have that, with a button on the?
I just asked them.
I'm going to check, I'll check with Nick, and have him go and check each vehicle and see what's going to happen, which ones don't. And I can get that to Joe probably tomorrow.
And I know you can mount them, and you can use them hands-free, you know?
I mean, Duane, you know, a lot of times when we're responding to a cluster call, you know, radio's going, sometimes dispatchers say, call in, second dispatch will pick up. They want to talk to you directly. Like Jeff said, policy can be written so that the officers have that ability to do that, just because, or a lot of times, we want something not to go over the radio traffic, and we will use cell phones for the call, just so it's not put out of here. So, I mean, we can modify that policy to amend this.
Definitely, that's why, you know, I don't want, you know, I wanted this, this doesn't impact the police and their operations. It's our Public Works, it's our other employees, you know, it's myself, you know, driving on Township, because, you know, if you're on Township business, you know, the liability's going to come back to the Township, you know, if I'm on my phone and I drive through a bus stop. And that's, I mean, you know, I'm, I think, I think there's some type of policy that's needed. How far you want to go is, you know, you tell me, and I'll draft the policy for.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think it's definitely worth doing. I just, in certain situations, you're going to need to vet them, they're going to need to, because, you know, situations dictate what you need to do. So we just need to be open to that. We can't, you can't draw the line and say, this is it, period, done, because of certain situations.
Quite frankly, Commissioner Britanni, that's why there's no disciplinary action in this, that, you know, there's no A, B, C, D. Yeah, every policy we write is open to interpretation.
Exactly.
Any more discussion? Put on agenda for next week.
Okay. That's all I have today.
All right, thank you. Planning and engineering topics, Mr. Vlinko.
There's just two items to present to you tonight. These are both lot consolidation and boundary line revisions in Westmoreland City, both from the same applicant, Betty Jean Vaselli. We're calling the Vaselli Two and Vaselli Three. You may remember, in January, you approved Vaselli One. Ms. Vaselli has cleaned up a lot of problems for us, consolidating lots. This Vaselli Three plan, there's a home built right across the property line, so they're under the same ownership, but she's consolidating them and making it one lot. So Planning Commission recommended both of these. I couldn't even justify making a PowerPoint for you, but it's. it's, it's just changing paper lines and cleaning things up. The one lot in Vasselli Three isn't even accessible from a public road, so this fixes that. Planning Commission recommends approval of both.
Any questions for Mr. Blenko?
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. No old business on the agenda for tonight. Any further board comments? Just need a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of I say a nay?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Six to zero. Meeting adjourned at 7:30.